Everyone, and welcome to the Winnetka Village Council's study session for June 11th, 2019. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and first off, I'd like to remind the audience to mute either your cellphones or other electronic devices. Second order of business is public comment. This is a time when anyone from the public can come on up to the microphone and share your thoughts with us on any item that is not on the agenda. Does anybody wish to address council this evening on anything that's not in the agenda? Seeing none, we can move along. Item 2A, which is my public comments. Steve, can you pop that up here once? Just a couple points of business. Now, this is where, this is the part of the meeting where Rob gets freaked out because it wasn't on the script, but...
I saw that the other day.
Saturday morning...
Settle down, Rob.
Saturday morning...
I'm like cracking a sweat here.
Saturday morning, I was out for my run, and as I was coming down Lincoln, as I always do, from the north heading south, these two people pulled up in their car and got out for the specific purpose to look at this window.
Yay!
And if you look, Karen, and this is blue sky, something or another...
Handmade jewelry.
Huh?
Blue sky handmade jewelry.
There you go. But they actually got out of their car because the window attracted them to come and see this, and so they were window shopping, and they were...
Interactive, that's what we're looking for.
There you go, Penny.
Awesome!
But it works, and here it is, it's a pop-up, you know, it's a pop-up operation, and they were actually trying to get in, but it was before nine o'clock, so the staff hadn't arrived yet, so they were going to go down the street and grab a cup of coffee and then come back and potentially purchase some jewelry there. So, I guess sometimes you push a little bit, and people respond in a positive way, and this is what we were always looking for from that concept. So, when you two get together with Karen to explore this further, I mean, the cool thing is, is that we do know it can work. So, I was really pleased to see that.
And I had a, I had a quick conversation with her at the farmer's market, at the village table, and so I think that there now, they have users for the space, I think, through the year, and she's also, they have gotten, and the suggestion that came up the other night, a, an intern who is developing a marketing plan for them, so it's good. So, we're gonna have, well, we will have further conversation.
But to actually see in action was really cool, and I took back all the bad things I said about Karen, so... So, great job, Caldwell Banker. Okay? That's my comment for the evening. Item 3, intergovernmental agreement with Nutria High School for stormwater improvements at Duke Child's Field. Tonight, we will discuss an important component of our global stormwater vision and a necessary component of the village's memorandum of understanding with the Cook County Forest Preserve for a wetlands restoration project on forest preserve land. After negotiating with Nutria School District 203, we have an agreement to allow construction of underground stormwater storage at Duke Child's Field. The agreement also provides for zoning approval to District 203, so improvements can be made to the athletic facilities at the site in conjunction, potentially with, in conjunction with the construction of the stormwater detention. Tonight, we've got Steve leading off. Peter will give you a quick run-through on the document, and David is here to talk about the zoning issues related to that as well. So, Steve, you want to take it away?
Thank you, and good evening. There we go. Is that better? You hear me? Okay. So, I wasn't exactly sure what to expect tonight in terms of an audience, so the presentation I put together drops back a little bit to talk about the vision process and how we got here. So, those of you that have been living with this for a long time can maybe tune out for the first couple of slides, because this will be background, but I want to make sure we're all in the starting gate before we get into the details of this particular agreement. So, this problem has been around for a long time. This is a cartoon from the, I believe it's the Chicago Daily News, from 1915, talking about flooding in Indian Hill and a contest for how to reuse water from flooded Winnetka basements. So, that's 104 years ago, and we are still dealing with the problem. So, after the disastrous flood in 2011, the village started looking for some detailed solutions to the western Winnetka stormwater issue, and after an eastward detour, we hired Strand Associates in 2015 to look at how to take the water out of the historic Skokie River watershed, which is roughly the western two-thirds of the village, and manage that in a way that would ultimately get it where it wants to go, which is the Skokie River at the west end of town. So, the study area boundary that's shown here is in red, which takes into account most of the watershed of the village. East of Hibbard Road, the areas west of Hibbard Road have separate drainage outlets to the river. The extended watershed is shown by the blue line there, so it's about three-quarters of the village that's involved in this particular study. The overall village drainage pattern, as most of you are familiar with, the water kind of west of Green Bay Road, if you will, wants to go directly to the Skokie River. That was blocked off in the '30s by a levee system that was put in to keep the river from flowing back into the village during heavy rain events, but that also prevents water from going out. So, over the years, we've kind of cobbled together a stormwater drainage system that consists of a series of pipes and pumps and some limited storage options. There are some neighborhoods in Winnetka where the water literally has to run through three separate pumping stations before it can get to the river. So, gravity has not been our friend. After an extensive vision process that included significant amounts of public engagement, a lot of blue sky thinking, looking at things that maybe seemed pie in the sky or different types of thinking, we came up with a stormwater vision that would address the 100-year storm event for areas of southern and western Winnetka. That target storm event is 4.85 inches of rain in three hours, so that's a really significant event, and the target level of service is keeping water out of homes. There are something like 474 properties that would be protected by this, and it consists of a network of improved conveyance pipes and several large stormwater storage facilities, including on Cook County property and in existing open space owned by the Winnetka Park District, Nutria High School District, and Winnetka District 36. After the village council discussed and approved that stormwater vision, the linchpin and really the first order of business was to work with the Cook County Forest Preserve. About 55% of the total storage that's required for this project is located on forest preserve property, and frankly, without forest preserve project, this vision just wouldn't work. So, the first thing to do was to take the project to the county. It took about a year of negotiating back and forth with Cook County, both their staff and their board, about this project that provides 74-plus-or-minus acre-feet of constructed stormwater storage, 109 acre-feet total when you take into account passive overbank storage on the 49-acre parcel that's located west of Hibbard Road, north of Winnetka Avenue. It includes open water, wetland, Sedge Meadow areas, water quality improvements. It took quite a bit of working back and forth and cooperating with a number of other stakeholder groups, including Open Lands, Friends of the Forest Preserve, the North Branch River stewards, and the village is going to have to maintain the improvements. This is essentially the layout of the project. So, Hibbard Road on the east or the right, Winnetka Avenue on the south, and the project consists of realigning and naturalizing the existing ditch that was dug through there in the early 1900s, expanding the ditch, naturalizing and reestablishing the wetlands that were on the site prior to the flood control improvements that were constructed by the CCC back in the '30s. We completed a memorandum of understanding, which was approved by the village council in August of 2017. It allows us to construct that wetland water storage on the property. We also committed to capturing and treating the first half-inch of runoff from the entire watershed as a water quality improvement. Right now, all our stormwater runs to that parcel anyhow, and there's no water quality treatment to speak of before it goes onto that parcel. And then, the big part of the agreement in terms of work for us going forward is that the Cook County Forest Preserve didn't want to be the only player, so they required that we bring to them intergovernmental agreements that allow storage on the other open spaces that were identified in our vision. So, Cook, Nutria High School District, Winnetka Park District, and Winnetka School District 36. So, we began negotiating with those three agencies, and the one we're bringing to you first is with Nutria High School District for stormwater storage improvement on Duke Child's Field. We went, really with Nutria Board and staff, we went sort of blue sky on the parcel. There's existing athletic fields that are located on the parcel that have significant drainage problems, and we sort of looked at, you know, this is going to be a generational opportunity for both stormwater construction, but also for Nutria to make some improvements to their fields. So, we went through a number of iterations, moving fields around, changing elevations, trying to come up with something that met our stormwater requirements, that met Nutria High School's recreational mission and requirements, and stayed within the project budget. And after a lot of back and forth, we wound up with a project, this is sort of turned on its side from typical, so north is to the right here, Hibbard Road's on the bottom, Willow Road's on the left, and it provides about 14.2 acre-feet of underground stormwater storage along the far eastern portion of the parcel. It uses precast stormwater units. This is one of the areas that would hold and treat stormwater before it discharges to the forest preserve property, and then this particular layout roughly maintains the grading of the existing field, and it doesn't impact either of the varsity baseball and softball fields. It allows for some improvements to the facilities, which are shown there in the black lining, and we'll talk about it a little bit later in the presentation, and it meets the requirements of how much stormwater storage we would need to get on the property, and it stays within So, it provides 50-year flood protection for Duke Child's Field, which is a 4.14-inch rain in three hours. Beyond that, the water would begin to back up on the edges of the field, but it's a significant drainage improvement for the Duke Child's Field facilities, and it's fully compatible with Nutria's long-term concept improvements for the fields. Those concept improvements are shown here, and I think it'll probably show a little better in the handout that you have in front of you, because it's small to read on the screen. It adds a junior varsity softball field where the northern soccer field is now, so at the kind of northeast portion of Duke Child's Field. It improves the existing junior vars, or the varsity softball field with artificial turf. It improves the existing varsity baseball field with an artificial turf infield, and there's some improved traffic access and parking along the north Cherry Street extension on the property. It replaces the existing maintenance and support building, which is how old? From the '60s? 1966? 56? So, it modernizes and replaces that building. Significant drainage and playability improvements in the fields, just because of our stormwater facility that'll be there, replacing the bleachers with improved seating and spectator amenities, and some safety enhancements in the form of protective areas to keep foul balls from going into the bleachers and the parking lot and all of that. The benefits to Nutria High School, as I mentioned, significantly improved drainage and playability of the fields. We will be a co-applicant with Nutria High School as they go through the permitting process for their stormwater improvements. They will also be able to take credit for our stormwater improvements against their detention requirements. They need to provide about 7.2 acre-feet of stormwater detention for the additional runoff from their, the parking area and the artificial turf areas. The value of that benefit's about $2.5 million in terms of savings to the taxpayer, because we don't have to build that storage twice, and then we'll enter into an intergovernmental agreement, which will replace and adjust the declaration of covenants to kind of clarify the future use of that property. There are several agreement documents that are in front of you that would put this into place, and I think, Peter, if you want to walk through the key terms of the intergovernmental agreement.
Thanks. Peter? I'll do this, I got this. This is intimidating. So, the intergovernmental agreement between District 203 and the village is a very unique document. The school district is not a home role, local government, the village is. There are things in the intergovernmental agreement that, but for the fact that we were doing it together, individually, we would not be able to do it. The Illinois Constitution and the municipal code provide provisions for intergovernmental cooperation and sharing authority between local governments. We used all of that authority for this agreement and for the process we used to get everything approved. As Steve said, overall, the intergovernmental agreement is exactly that. It is a intergovernmental cooperation agreement that kind of sets the, an umbrella agreement sets the process and the basic elements of how these improvements can be built and maintained on the Duke Child's Field. It allows the village to construct its stormwater improvements under Duke Child's Field. As Steve said, it provides 50-year flood protection, requires us to provide 50-year flood protection for the field once our improvements are done, a significant amount of detention and compensatory storage value improvements, and significant improvement in drainage infrastructure for the field. All those, all of that, very important to both parties. It allows and coordinates the district's improvements to be undertaken, and also requires, as part of all that, the village to regrade and seed inside a portion where we have done our improvements when we are done. As Steve mentioned, there is currently a covenant on the property that was placed there in conjunction with the village's 1979 transfer of the, conveyance of the property to District 203. The covenant generally, in 1979 language, provides for some, a requirement that the fields be maintained as open space generally, no large buildings, that they mean, basically that the property be used for an athletic facility as it's being currently used. It does specifically authorize the village to maintain and utilize the property for underground utilities, and it does include a village repurchase option of the property under certain limited circumstances. The IGA, again, generally calls for the swapping out of that covenant with a new easement document. The benefits of that are that the new easement document would be very clearly written, there would be no ambiguities about who can do what on the property, would continue to maintain open space, would allow the village's utility stormwater improvements, as well as current and some limited future utilities. And it would also restrict the district, as the district is restricted now, from utilizing the field other than basically for athletic facilities and related structures. The, so, let me just go over some specific terms of the IGA. The IGA does not obligate the village to build our improvements. It simply says that if we choose to move forward with our improvements, then this is how we will move forward with them in cooperation with District 203. It provides that our stormwater improvements will not unreasonably interfere with District 203's field improvements. It provides that the district, and I'll get into this a little bit in a minute, the district is obligated to approve our final plans, because, actually, I'll do it right now. Neither the district or the village has final plans for their improvements right now, but we had, but both parties wanted very much an assurance that those final plans would be approved. We didn't want to come back later and have to seek each other's approval for final plans. Both parties have preliminary plans. So, the, what we devised is that both parties would approve preliminary plans now, and so long as final plans did not, were not substantially different than those preliminary plans, each body would be required to approve them administratively. So, in the, for the village's standpoint, we, well, let me start with District 203. District 203 last night approved the IGA. That approval approved our preliminary plans for our stormwater improvements. Now, after our approval, we will have approved their preliminary plans. We had to, we are a zoning, we have zoning authority, the district does not have zoning authority, so the district can approve our preliminary plans, as they did last night, by a simple vote. For us to do it, it required a zoning process. Because of those intergovernmental cooperation authorities that I mentioned, we were able to have, as part of our effort to provide District 203 with their preliminary approval at the same time as we approved the IGA, which is basically concurrently with their approval of the IGA and our preliminary plans, that we would adopt a text amendment to our zoning ordinance that would authorize the village council, by resolution, to approve the preliminary plans and all of the necessary zoning relief that's required for those to be approved under our zoning code. It would also authorize the village council to be the body in the village that holds the public hearings for all of that zoning relief. David's going to talk specifically about what that zoning relief is in the specific, but that's, that process is incorporated into and required by the intergovernmental cooperation agreement. The construction of our improvements is, will be governed by a construction schedule that will be agreed to mutually by the parties, once our final plans are in place and we're ready to go. Once that is in place, we are bound by that construction schedule. We have committed in the IGA that we will, that our construction schedule will be one of four different periods of time. The first will begin in a month, Steve, I'm sure of that. It's basically summer to summer, 2019 to 2020, or the, one of the subsequent summers, with the last one being 2022 to 2023. We've committed to starting and stopping during those periods of time. In the unlikely event that we, after we start construction, if we abandon the project for whatever reason, we're required to restore the property, we're required to maintain our improvements so that it's in compliance with our final plans, and it doesn't unnecessarily interfere with District 203's field improvements. The agreement has five principal monetary requirements. The village will make a payment upon commencement of construction of $225,000 to offset the district's costs related to the village's construction activities and the interruption of school activities. Again, only upon commencement of construction, the village will make a payment of a little more than $54,000 to offset costs of the district field improvements related to the restoration of a portion of the property used for the athletic fields. The village, as part of the improvements, will provide 100% credit against our stormwater fee for the project, given the stormwater improvements. If the village voluntarily chooses not to proceed with the project after we adopt the IGA and before construction, we've agreed to reimburse the district for the costs it has incurred in negotiating the agreement of a little more than $58,000. And finally, if after commencement, after commencement of construction, we don't comply with the construction schedule, we'll pay $72 a day for the days that we are late and that interfere with their activities. The district field improvement requirements mirror, to a large extent, what I just said about ours. They're not obligated to construct their field improvements, but if they do, they're required to do it pursuant to the IGA. Their preliminary plans will be approved by the council when the council approves the documents. Their field improvements cannot interfere with our stormwater improvements. Their final plans will be approved by the village, so long as they're substantially the same administratively. There'll be a construct, agreed-upon construction schedule that they'll be required to comply with, and that they will always have to maintain their field improvements consistent with their final plans, and so they don't interfere with our stormwater improvements. As I mentioned, there, we have the special zoning process that David's going to talk about specifically. The final piece of this is at the end, at the very end, the district requested a side letter, what we're calling a side letter, to deal with what happens if the project does not proceed, if the village is unable or voluntarily decides not to proceed with the project, what happens to the covenant and the new easement? Because remember, the easement, the covenant doesn't go away, and the easement doesn't get recorded until we're right about to commence construction. And the question was, what happens if, before that, we decide that the project can't proceed? We have agreed in the side letter to negotiate at that point what should, specifically should happen, and the reason we can't be more definitive about that is because we don't know why the project won't have gone forward. There may be engineering reasons for that, and it would not be, it would be a guessing game right now to say what would be in the easement agreement that would replace the covenant. We just don't know at this point. But we have agreed in the side letter to use good faith and best efforts to negotiate what happens. But to be clear, there's nothing in the letter that would force the village to allow the covenant to be terminated under terms that the council did not determine was in the best interest of the village, and vice versa for the school district. There's nothing in the letter that would force them to do something that they did not believe was in the best interest of their constituents. So, I will stop that and let David talk more specifically about the zoning.
So, as Peter mentioned, next week, you will be having a public hearing on a zoning ordinance text amendment, which will establish this special process by which the village council will hold the public hearing and consider the necessary zoning relief, so your advisory bodies would not be involved. So, we're adding a new chapter to provide us with that authority, and it would allow us to provide the various zoning relief listed up here, as well as a certificate of appropriateness for the design elements, which would normally be done by the design review board. Just a very quick overview of the necessary zoning relief. So, in R2 District, athletic fields associated with a high school require special use approval, so changes to that require special use approval. Variations that are required for this specific plan, there are four variations. Oh, that's rows. There we go. There we go. So in the upper northeast corner, where the school district is adding a new parking lot, there would need to be a setback variation. Along Hibbard Road, the setback is 50 feet. So for the parking lot, the variation, the setback would be 18 feet, eight inches. The new softball field that's replacing the existing soccer field would have a setback, the playfield area of nine feet, two inches. And then the lacrosse field, which is an existing field, would have a setback of 20 feet. The last variation is for the proposed backstop netting along the varsity baseball field. It would be 50 feet in height. It would run a total of 250 feet. That's 50 feet behind home plate and then 100 feet along each of the first and third baselines. And then the last item for approval then would be the certificate of appropriateness for the design elements. So that's a quick summary of the zoning relief that would be necessary. And at the public hearing next week, we'll provide some more information. But it's basically the plans that you have. Exhibit L includes the plans that we would be including as part of that zoning approval. Peter, you already went over the letter of understanding.
Yep.
Thanks, David.
The only I would add, Steve, to that is I think we're using tonight's study session as an unofficial introduction of the ordinance for the text amendment so that next week, what will be on your agenda is a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement, an ordinance approving the text amendment, which will be looking for both introduction and adoption, a resolution approving the zoning relief, and then a motion authorizing the village president to execute the side letter.
So what Peter just said.
What I just said.
So yeah, you're not, you're not, you're not being asked to approve anything tonight. This is sort of an initial kind of public airing for discussion and questions. And then all of this would come formally for approval to you a week from tonight. So this is a fascinating picture. This comes from 1938. There was a very large flood of the Skokie River. This picture is taken from roughly Oak Street and Hibbard Road, looking south. That is a young man named Gordon Smith, who was the Public Works Operations Superintendent when I first started here in 1985. So he was, he was a child on his bicycle there. And this actually came out of the Smith family archives. That was a, that was a dike that was built by the CCC during that flood in the summer of 1938 to keep the water from the river that's in essentially Duke Child's Field from flowing eastward and swamping, swamping the village. So just a reminder, this is, this is not a new problem. And they have been trying solutions, formal and ad hoc, since, since the 30s. So with that, if there's any questions. We also have representatives from Nutria High School facilities staff in case there are any specific questions on the Duke Child's Field improvements.
All right, I'll open the floor up to the trustees to fire away. Any questions, comments, drill downs? This is the time to do it.
I would like to say thank you to Nutria for all the work that you've done. I was at the meeting last night with Chris and Rob and Steve and a couple of weeks ago. And they had a great discussion. And they said it, and I think we should say it as well, it's rare to see this kind of partnership between government agencies in Illinois. And, and this is a good example of what we can do when we work together. And, and I also want to thank Chris and Rob and Steve for the tremendous effort they put into it. This is two years in the works, just this piece. We have many other pieces. And, you know, having watched over, over that time, just the back and forth, these are complex issues. This is a problem that won't get fixed without just a lot of work. And that's all it is. I remember when Scott Myers and I came on the village council and the eastward thing was on the radar and there was a lot of consternation and concern about that. It seemed like the simplest, most direct route. We have done the opposite of the simplest, most direct route, but I think it's much better.
And cheaper.
And cheaper.
Hopefully.
And better for the waters of Illinois.
Yep.
I got a couple of questions and just clarification for the public who hear or might be watching. When they talk about the athletic field improvements, maybe just clarify that who's paying for those costs? Because it wasn't really talked about publicly right now.
Sure. So the village is paying for the village construction costs. We will provide sort of a level pad for, for the high school district to construct their lacrosse and new softball field on. And we will be providing the gravel base and the grading for the new parking lot. The rest of the field improvements will, the cost for that would be borne by Nutria High School.
Right. That's how I understood it, but I just want to make sure.
Just to be clear, that's if they decide.
That's if, right. It was an important topic at last night's conversation, just so that everybody's clear on this, John. Nutria High School has not committed to the $5.5 million worth of improvements at this point in time. They, last night, they discussed potentially going forward with small pieces of it, namely the parking lot and the nets. And what was the third one? Okay, yeah, and the sod restoration. But a lot of the larger things that they had in their program may wait until they, they're able to deal with it in their budget.
That's all we understand. Next clarification is, you talked about currently Duke Child's Field. Are you going to have the new design as a 50-year flood protection? What is it now? I mean, again, just to show that there is an improvement.
Like, like, like zero. I mean, I mean, seriously, it, anything more than, what, like a quarter, half inch of rain and, and you start holding water in some of the, some of the lowest areas of the field. One of the issues that's there now is, is Duke Child's Field actually has its own separate drainage outlet. It doesn't connect into the village's system on Hibbard Road, which is probably a good thing because then when our system surcharges, we would, we would blow everything out there. But it actually drains directly to the river. And so there's, there's an issue with, with when the river elevation goes up, much like we, we wind up having to pump. They have to pump their fields out when the river elevation goes up. And that's why that water stands around in those fields for, you know, several days at a time. Even this spring, when, when we had times when there was very limited flooding and just intersection flooding in the village, they were out of commission in the field.
And the next one might be for David. One of the zoning resolutions is the varsity backstop netting. It says increase height allowed from 35 to 50. Can we just clarify that it's only the backstop netting, the height? You know what I mean? It's not an overall 50-foot height across the property, just for the?
It's just for the backstop netting. Yep.
And then maybe clarify as to 50 and 100 and 100 on the first and third base.
Correct. Yes, okay.
Something about, I'm not sure how we, just make sure it's maintained.
Okay.
Well, we have the athletic director here and he's going to promise to keep that thing looking beautiful and shiny and transparent and we'll never even know it's there, right?
And again.
Good. See, there you go. You got his commitment.
Same comments at the end, it's great, great work on the entire village, Nutria. You know, future work is still ahead of us, but thanks again for everything.
It's a big first step.
A question for Peter. The agreement, it looks. It looks like the easement will, let's say that Nutria decides that it wanted to build a stadium like Northwestern University's with fancier seating, a lot, a lot more to it than what they have now or what they're proposing now. Would that be banned under this agreement? Anything bigger than what they, they have now or what they put in the preliminary plans? I mean, so we don't end up with a much bigger stadium or ballpark?
It would not be allowed under the covenant, under the new easement. They would have to request zoning approval from the village.
Can I just ask, just a clarification on a couple of things? And again, this is a great, great program, great cooperation and so on and so forth. But the compensatory storage, the value of that of $2.5 million, is that based on the build-out of their plan? Is that, what, where does that value come from?
So the, the value is based on roughly, they have to provide about 7.2 acre-feet of compensatory storage and detention. The cost for the village to construct that is about $350,000 per acre foot. So you just multiply that out, you come up with a value of about $2.5 million. And that's money that Nutria would have to spend if they went ahead and did this project on their own. But the way that we're structuring the MWRD permit is that part of that underground construction will be sort of dedicated, if you will, to their regulatory requirements. And the rest is for our improvement for the, for the general flooding conditions of the village. And we can kind of double count that because we're, we're not meeting a regulatory requirement to provide flood protection for the, for the village. So it's, so it's available sort of for, for both purposes.
Okay, so back to the point that the, that the school, that Nutria is not obligated to build their, build this out fully as proposed or whatever. We will just design our project to facilitate even when they ever did.
That's right.
And understand, Bob, that we're not building an extra seven acre feet. This was seven acre feet that we had programmed in. But for the application, we can allocate seven acre feet to their project because we don't have any regulatory requirements to permit.
Yeah, so, so we're, we are, we are going to build this infrastructure and it may not be needed from their standpoint for years and years, but it's there if they.
Well, I think the idea would be, truthfully, to get their application in right away because, you know, Steve circulated a memo that MWRD is jacking up their, whatever the calculations are, that would actually increase it by another, what, 20% potentially?
Right, 20 to 23%.
Yeah, so it'd be in their best interest to jump on the bandwagon now and, right? And so that's going to be really job one moving forward, is to get that MWRD application and for them to make sure that we're covered with the seven acre feet.
Right.
Okay. And in a way, I see that there's no money being changed hands back to Nutria. It's just a construction cost.
Understood, but it's, it's a benefit.
It's a huge benefit.
Huge benefit if they ever wanted to do this.
If, if they came on board later, they'd have to do it themselves.
Correct, correct. Okay, well, that's good cooperation. And then secondly, the 100%, first of all, Peter, why is, why is the 100% credit for the stormwater utility fee, why is that in two, it's mentioned in two separate areas? And it's in, it's on page five, you know, part zero or whatever, and then it's under the partnership credit, row number four? I mean, we talked about it, I don't, not being the ordinance lawyer or whatever, I don't see why it's there twice, but it is there twice, maybe just for emphasis?
Correct.
It doesn't make it 200%.
It does not make it 200%.
I got that. I just think it was like, you know, we said it once and we emphasized it.
Well, the, where it's written on page five, that's just a recital. It's not an operative for.
The official is partnership credit.
Correct.
What, just again, just to quantify it for, we all understand this. What, what would we, because I, I saw this several places in the ride that's on. What would we value that credit to be?
I can't remember, but Steve's got the number.
About $6,400 per year.
Might as well. $6,400 a year, okay.
Yeah, because it's, it's just the stormwater credit for what's currently on that parcel.
Okay, so we're paying credit, we're paying credit for whatever.
Right, right. So, so right, right now, yeah, so right now, they're paying about $6,400 a year. So that, that could potentially grow with these improvements and then if they do something different in the future.
Do you want to agree with these improvements?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but somewhere under $10,000, I would imagine.
It's not, it's not a, okay. Good, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, issues, clarifications?
I would say, and I know that, John, you have an issue with the netting. And I had an issue with the netting way back when. But I think we're all seeing in real life, in several hardball baseball circumstances, that the netting is now something that has to be done.
Well, for spectators, I agree. Regardless, it's between here and.
Right, so I think it's, the time has come and we've seen it in real life in the last month or so, so.
Can I have that one person?
Right.
As long as you don't put signage on it, advertising rights.
Well, and.
Well, unless you want to sponsor the program.
Now the attorneys are getting involved. No, but, but also, I mean, I don't know if anybody noticed last week in the paper that there was another foul ball reported whacking somebody in Willow Road last week. So that, it is an occurrence that, that, that happens. And sometimes it gets reported, sometimes it doesn't.
Just keep a nice looking for your entrance to an.
You know, the interesting thing that, that came up in the conversation, and I don't want to belabor it, but evidently, a lot of people who, who come to the, the baseball games refuse to park on that, that, that eastern side of the parking lot because they know they're going to get bombed. So the good news is, is that by putting this netting up, that people will feel more secure and use the parking lot to its fullest and kind of relieve some of the pressure across the street and then some of the illegal parking that goes on for people who are just trying to avoid getting hit by a baseball, so. Good side benefit. I want to say too, that, that it's been, it's been a long road. I mean, this is, remember, two years ago, right around now, we brought the Cook County MOU back to the council. And we engaged, yeah, and we engaged Nutria shortly after that. So we've been at this a while and it's, I won't say it was a struggle, but, you know, it took us a while to understand our differences and understand what we really needed to get out of this. And, you know, it shows that even if you stick with it, that governmental agencies can work together and they, and they can look beyond their individual silos a little bit to try to, to try to find ways that they actually benefit the community and actually provide a twofer. You know, look at Nutria has the capacity now to really, you know, move forward on a big portion of their athletic facilities improvement program. And we get the benefit of picking up, how many acre feet again? Yeah, about, about 15, 16% of the total need, which is a huge amount of water. So slowly but surely, we're pecking away at it and hopefully in the next couple of months, we'll be bringing District 36 and the, and the Park District back here. And the, the puzzle will be assembled and we'll be able to start moving forward on some of this, which then Bob gets to talk about financing. So, and, and I'm always keeping that in mind, that, you know, we do have, you know, we do have a specific process. And clearly, the next stage is when, once we get the other two agreements nailed down, then we can finally put real numbers to the entire project, which will then lead to conversations, real conversations about real dollars that are going to be required to complete the project. So the good news is, is that even though this has been a long process, we haven't spent a penny more than has been necessary to move this along, unlike maybe the first time around when there was a lot of robust spending going on before the project even had the, the reality checks built in. So we're moving judiciously, but we're also moving fiscally responsibly and incrementally spending money just to move it to the next level. So we're being really careful on that front as well.
It also struck me, Chris, that, that so much of this, just for a layman reading this, seems fair. I mean, there are, you know, if, you know, if it doesn't go forward, whatever, there's some compensation, you know, for their costs. We, they deserve that. We, they deserve that, and it's fair in terms of the use of the property. It just seems like a, had a good balance in the end here.
It took a while to get there, but, but we found those fair points, and made sure that once we struck them, that they were memorialized right away, so we didn't forget about them or get them lost in the next, in the next issue.
Right.
So, but it was a good negotiation from that standpoint, and hopefully you all feel that this is worthwhile enough to move it to the next level. So we'll have to wait till next week to see how that goes with the vote, but I'm feeling...
I'll be a guest.
Thank you, Andy.
You don't have to show up.
I, I've always learned not to count the votes before the vote, but at least I know I got one, so.
At least right now, right?
Yeah. All right, well, I'll open it up to the public. Does the public have any comments, questions, or any issues they would like to raise on this?
I think this is as exhausted as you are.
Do I look tired tonight, Pat? Do I look tired tonight?
I think we're all dragging.
Well, the cottonwoods are letting loose, and I can just feel it everywhere, so. All right, well, I'll close the public comment, and any final comments here before we close up?
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you, yeah, we appreciate your help, and Augie, we look forward to a, a good working relationship out there moving forward too. Dave, good to see you again. Thank, thank you so much for coming out. We really appreciate it. So, okay, we'll be moving on here. Oh, this matter will appear on the June 18th council agenda for introduction and adoption. Okay. Lastly, may I have a motion to go into closed session to discuss the setting of a price for the sale or lease of property owned by the village pursuant to Section 2C6 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Swer?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Colardarty?
Yes.
Trustee Wondner?
Yes.
Trustee Dible?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you, and the meeting will adjourn immediately after the executive session.